Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's just after ten o'clock. Apologies for the slight delay, but if we could make a start. Welcome to the annual meeting of the County Council taking place on Wednesday, the twenty fourth of May, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the chamber to please switch off or make silent their mobile phones? Before we move on to the business on the agenda, I'd like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. As in all previous council meetings, any request to speak must be made using your voting handset. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of Committee Services will assist. I would like to extend welcome to the members of the public attending the meeting. You're very welcome to attend and observe the proceedings, however, you should not disrupt the meeting. Before we move on to the election of a chair, can I also remind the council that speeches can only be made on the nomination of the Chair of the council. All other nominations today will be moved and seconded without speeches. So, item one, can I have nominations for the Chair of the council, please? councillor Shield?
Thank you, Chair. Morning, members. On behalf of the Joint Administration, the nomination for the Chair is councillor John Nicholson, and I'd like to make a few remarks in support of John's nomination. I've known John as an independent colleague and a loyal friend for more than twenty years. John, if you haven't already determined, is a formidable person who relies and sticks to the rulebook at all times, in our case, the Constitution. John is sincere and considerate to all members, irrespective of their political persuasions, but she is not to be messed about by anybody. And a word of caution to members, as she's often warned me, you don't want to see my nasty side. I'm convinced that John will be an excellent advocate and ambassador for Durham County Council, especially in the lead-up to the formal establishing of the North East Mayoral Combined Authority. And I wish her and her devoted husband, Rob, being married more than fifty years, a most successful and enjoyable civic year. Thank you.
Can I have a second, please? Councillor Hopgood?
Yeah, thanks. I'd like to formally second John for the position of Chair of Durham County Council.
Are there any further nominations? Can that be agreed? Thank you. Councillor Nicholson, if you could turn me on the desk, please.
I, John Nicholson, of twelve Old Blackett Street, Cattergate, Stanley County, Durham, have been elected to the office of Chair of this County Council. Declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I just wanted to say thank you so much for having the faith that I'll be able to do this job. Can I thank councillor Shield? I think. I was told to keep it very short if I was to be elected, and that's exactly what I'd do. I hope we get through the business today in a really good manner. Thank you. So we move on to item two, the election of Vice Chair. Can I have nominations for the office of Vice Chair of the council?
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I nominate councillor Mike McGorn of Lanchester Division.
Second it, chairman, thank you.
Are there any further nominations?
We nominate councillor Shirley Quinn.
And can I have a second, dear?
Chair, I second councillor Quinn.
Thank you. So we will move on and James will explain the voting process.
Thank you, Chair. So we'll be using the voting handsets as is usual. We'll take the nominations in the order that we receive them. So that'll be councillor McGorn on number one, councillor Quinn on number two, and use number three to abstain. And as ever, if you press the wrong button, if you press the right one, that will correct it, and I'll let everyone know when the vote is open.
Chair, can we have a named vote, please?
Councillor McDonald, as ever, will need ten for a named vote. Okay, thank you. It will be a named vote, and the names and how people voted will appear in the minutes, and we'll flick through them on the screen as well. The vote is open. We'll close the vote now.
Thank you, everyone. Councillor Mike McGorn, sixty-two, councillor Quinn, sixty. Councillor McGorn is elected to the position of Vice Chair. Congratulations on your appointment, can I? Can I invite you to join us on the dais?
I, Mike McGorn, of four Phoenix Close, Langley Park, Durham, have been elected to the office of Vice Chair of the council. Declare that I take the office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for everybody that voted for me. I hope that I can serve you well and serve as John's deputy. Many thanks for giving me the opportunity. Thank you.
Can we move on to item three, the minutes of the last meeting? Can I have a mover and a second to confirm the minutes?
Chair, can I move the minutes, please?
Second the minutes, Chair.
Minutes agreed? Thank you. Item four, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any items of business on the agenda? No, thank you. We move on to item five. Colleagues, it is my sad duty to formally report the deaths of former county councillors, Harry Bennett and Alderman and former Sedgfieldbury councillor Frank Forrest. Harry was elected to the County Council in two thousand and thirteen, where he served the Peterley East District Electoral Division until May, two thousand and twenty-one. Frank was a former Chiltern member for Sedgfield Borough Council between nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and nine, and was made an honorary Alderman in two thousand and nine. Can I ask the councils to stand with me for a moment, silent? Thank you. Members, you will have already have noticed that we will be taking some photographs throughout the course of this morning's meeting. The council photo will be taken in the council chamber at the conclusion of the meeting and will take five to ten minutes to organise. As always, your patience will be much appreciated. Earlier this month, communities across the county came together to mark the coronation of His Majesty, King Charles III. It was wonderful to see so many of our residents honouring such an historic occasion with street parties and parades. The council marked the event in a number of ways, including displaying the portrait of the new monarch on the town halls in Durham and Bishop Auckland. The World Heritage Site of Durham Cathedral was also lit in the colours of the Union Flag. On behalf of the council, I would like to formally congratulate His Majesty, King Charles III, on his coronation and wish him well for the future for his reign. Can I extend a warm welcome to councillor Julie Scurfield, the recently elected member of Chesley Street East Division? I am pleased to announce that my chair's charities for my forthcoming year will be the Durham Association of Boys and Girls Clubs and the Alzheimer's Society. The Durham Association of Boys and Girls Clubs are committed and dedicated to supporting young people throughout the region to help them to achieve their goals and become valued members of the local and wider community. The Alzheimer's Society is working towards a world where dementia no longer devastates lives. They do this by giving help to those living with dementia today and providing hope for the future. Finally, I want to take the opportunity to remind all councillors of their obligation under the Code of Conduct. I would kindly ask you all address each other in a correct manner during our meetings, and would also request that the respect is shown from all sides of the chamber at all times. Robust debate is part of the democratic process, but please respect the views of others, and do not point fingers during debate. It is not appropriate to shout at other councillors across the floor during debate. We have microphones which allow everyone to be heard, so please use them when speaking. I would ask that all councillors remain in the chamber at the end of the meeting and stand whilst I and the Vice Chair and officers leave the dais and exit the council chamber at the conclusion of the meeting. Councillors are then free to leave the chamber. However, today, if you could remain, as we will have the group photograph, thank you. We move on to item six, the leaders' announcement of deputy leader and cabinet members.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to just announce today that the Cabinet and the Deputy Leader, Richard Bell, in the Cabinet will remain unchanged for the next year. Thank you.
Can we move on to item seven, the annual review of the Constitution? Can I ask James of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to present this year's annual review of the Constitution. The report and the review follow the same format as previously, and the table summarising all amendments is at table as an appendix twenty-seven of the report, which is page one hundred and seventy-seven in your Agenda PAX. The most significant changes this year relate to the format and the appearance of the document, and in particular, the arrangement of the sections. This year, we're proposing that the document is reordered so that the relevant sections appear together rather than in alphabetical order, which should make the Constitution easier to navigate. In relation to the officer scheme of delegation, Cabinet considered amendments to this at its meeting on the fifteenth of March. Amendments were intended to reflect changes in legislation and structural changes within the council. There are proposed changes to the council procedure rules, and they're set out from paragraph fifty-eight of the report, and these reflect changes considered by the Constitution Working Group over the course of the previous municipal year. Some of these include reviewing inconsistencies regarding duration of meetings and what happens at the expiry of the allotted time for meetings, and ensuring that the scope of questions submitted to Cabinet and council are consistent. There are also some minor changes proposed to the financing contract procedure rules to clarify and update them. to clarify and update them to reflect legislation and updated guidance. There's a proposed amendment to the employee code of conduct to allow employees to accept token gifts from service users of the type usually given at Christmas as a thank you, but only where refusal would cause offence or impact on working relationships. There was a request received in relation to the code of practice for members and officers dealing with planning matters, and that was in relation to making site visits for planning committees mandatory. This was not taken forward, given that this might have an impact on quorum. Sorry, yes, that would have an impact on the quorum of the meetings. There are proposed changes in relation to Standards Committee at paragraph 34 to 37 of the report, and that's proposing that the council delegate responsibility for approving the arrangements for dealing with code of conduct complaints. This is to streamline the process for approval and speed up implementation of those arrangements, but council will still, full council will still retain responsibility for the code of conduct itself. There's also a proposal that council delegate responsibility for the appointment of independent persons to the Standards Committee. The council is required to appoint at least one. The most recent appointment exercise took place in September 2021, where two independent persons were appointed. One has since stood down, and the remaining independent person is unable to act for a period of this municipal year. As a consequence of this, the Corporate Director of Resources exercised delegated authority in consultation with the Chair of Standards Committee to appoint an interim independent person, and a process for appointing new substantive independent persons is currently underway. The recommendations, as in the report, are at paragraph four, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a mover and a seconder to the report?
Thank you, Chair. The council's constitution sets out how the council operates, how decisions are made, and the procedures which are followed to ensure that these are efficient, transparent, and accountable to local people. Some of these processes are required by law, while others are a matter for the council to choose. It is good practice to review the constitution regularly and to ensure that it remains fit for purpose and reflects good practice in legislation. As in previous years, the council's cross-party constitution working group have been consulted on the proposed changes, particularly in relation to the Standards Committee terms of reference, the council procedure rules, and the code of practice for members and officers dealing with planning matters. The proposed changes to the council procedure rules seek to streamline arrangements for concluding the business of the meeting when the time allowed for the meeting has been reached. Cabinet approved the proposed changes to the officer scheme of delegation in respect of executive functions at its meeting on the 15th of March 2023. And in moving the recommendations set out at paragraph four in the report, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the monitoring officer and her team for undertaking this thorough review, and to all the officers across the council who have contributed. Thank you.
Chair, I second the report and recommendations at paragraph four.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the report? Does the council agree the proposed changes to the constitution and its publication online? Thank you. We move on to item eight, appointment of council bodies and allocation of seats to political groups under section 15 of the Local Government and Housing Act 1989. Can I ask the deputy monitoring officer to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is to appoint committees and the Corporate Parenting Panel in accordance with the constitution and determine the allocation of seats amongst the eight political groups on the council. Paragraph five of the report sets out the legislative requirements regarding political balance and the principles to be followed when allocating seats. Paragraph six of the report sets out the number of seats each group has on the council and their percentage entitlement to seats across the committees. Appendix two sets out the proportionate distribution of seats by group. Appendix three sets out the allocation of seats across the eight groups, and appendix four sets out the composition of the Health and Wellbeing Board. Chair, the recommendations are set out at paragraph four.
Thank you. Can I have a mover and a seconder to the report?
Move it, Chair.
Second the report and recommendations at paragraph four.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the report? Does the council agree the recommendations detailed in the report? Thank you. We move on to item nine, appointment of chairs and vice chairs, committees and subcommittees listed on the agenda. I will invite nominations for the chairs and vice chairs for each committee and subcommittee in order that they appear on the agenda. Where more than one nomination is moved and seconded, the nominations will be put to a vote. Where there is only one nomination, I propose that we seek to agree that without a vote. All nominations need to be moved and seconded and voted on or agreed. Number one is Appeals and Complaints Committee. Can I have a nomination for the appointment of Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates Terry Duffy.
Second that nomination.
Thank you. Are there any?
We nominate councillor Danny Wood.
Chair, I second councillor Danny Wood.
Chair, as it was for the Vice Chair of the council, we'll take them in the order they were received. So on your voting handsets, councillor Terry Duffy will be number one, councillor Danny Wood will be number two. Again, three to abstain. If you press the wrong button, pressing the right button will correct your vote, and I'll let you know when the vote is open. The vote is now closed.
The vote for Appeals and Complaints Committee is Terry Duffy, 62, Danny Woods, 60. No abstentions. Terry Duffy is elected. We move on to the second. This is the Appeals and Complaints Vice Chair. Can I have nomination, please?
Nominate Danny Wood.
Chair, I second Danny Wood.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
We nominate Eric Mavon.
And the seconder?
Second.
Thank you. Again, James Will. Are there, are there no other nominations?
Chair, the nominations from the Joint Administration and the Labour Group have been pre-populated into the voting group, so if everybody could disregard what I said previously about taking them in the order they were received. What we'll do in this case is number one will be Eric Mavon and number two will be Danny Woods. So one, Eric Mavon, two, Danny Wood, three to abstain. Yeah, and again, if you press the wrong button, press the right button, and that will correct it, and I'll let you know when the vote is open. The vote's open.
It's wrong. It says Gordon Binney.
Yeah, yeah, we'll change it, don't worry. The vote's open, if everyone can check that it does say the right names on the voting handsets.
Chair, could I just check, does everybody know that they're voting again?
Just to emphasise the point that councillor Willock's made, anybody who voted in the first aborted election, their votes have been cleared off, so everybody will need to vote again. We're closing the vote. Okay, we're closing the vote.
Thank you, everyone. The Vice Chair of Appeals and Complaints Committee, Eric Mavon, 62, Danny Woods, 60. Eric Mavon is duly elected as Vice Chair. We move on to item three, Audit Committee. Can I have nominations for the appointment of Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates councillor Alex Watson.
Nominate councillor Simon Hennig.
Second the Chair.
Nominate councillor Simon Hennig.
Chair, I second councillor Hennig.
Thank you.
Members, I hope this is right. We've got number one, councillor Alex Watson, number two, councillor Simon Hennig, three to abstain. If you press the wrong button, pressing the right button will correct it. The vote is open. We close the vote.
Thank you, everyone. The Audit Committee Chair, Alex Watson, 62, Simon Hennig, 60. Alex Watson is elected as Chair. Thank you. We move on to Audit Committee. Can I have nominations for the appointment of Vice Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates councillor Fenwick.
Second the nomination.
Can that be agreed? Thank you. I think there's a gremlin in this morning. We move on, we move on to item five, Chief Officer Appointments Committee, can I have a nomination for the appointment of Chair?
Joint Administration nominates councillor Hopgood.
Second nomination.
We nominate councillor Carl Marshall.
Chair, I second councillor Marshall.
Are there any other nominations?
Thank you, Chair. Number one on the voting handsets will be for councillor Hopgood, number two will be for councillor Marshall, and number three will be to abstain, and I'll let you know when the vote is open.
That's a Vice Chair. So we're on Chair, and we've got the Vice Chair up.
It's the only stream I had as well.
It doesn't come up yet.
Excuse me, Chair, could we take a comfort break while we're waiting for the IT being sorted?
We'll take five minutes if everyone's agreed.
The vote's open. We'll close the vote.
Thank you. Chief Officer Appointments Chair, Amanda Hopgood, 62, Carl Marshall, 60. Amanda is... Thank you, we move on to item six, Chief Officer Appointments Committee, can I have nominations for the appointment of Vice Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates councillor Bell.
Second that.
We nominate councillor Rob Crute.
Chair, I second councillor Crute.
Are there any other nominations?
Thank you, Chair, it'll be number one on your handsets for councillor Richard Bell, and number two on your handsets for councillor Crute, number three to abstain. The vote's open. Chair will close the vote.
Thank you. The Chief Officer Appointments Vice Chair, Richard Bell, 62, Rob Crute, 60. Richard Bell is duly... We move on to number seven, High Wiss Committee, can I have nominations for the appointment of Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates councillor Omerod.
Second that nomination.
Nominate councillor Rob York.
Chair, I second councillor York.
Chair, it'll be number one on handsets for councillor Omerod, and number two on handsets for councillor York, number three to abstain. The vote's open. Chair will close the vote.
Thank you. Nominations for High Wiss Chair, councillor Omerod, 62, councillor York, 60. Councillor Omerod is elected. Can we move on to number eight, High Wiss Committee, can I have the nominations for the appointment of Vice Chair?
Joint Administration nominates councillor Hutchinson.
Second that nomination.
Nominate councillor George Smith.
Second councillor Smith.
Chair, it'll be councillor Hutchinson on number one, and councillor Smith on number two, number three to abstain. And the vote's open. Chair, we'll close the vote.
The nominations for Vice Chair of Highways, Councillor Hutchinson, 62, Councillor Smith, 60. Councillor Hutchinson is nominated. Can we move on to number nine? General Licensing and Registration Committee, can I have a nomination for the appointment of Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates Councillor Brown.
I second that nomination.
Nominate Councillor Ian McLean.
Second Councillor McLean.
Chair, it's Councillor Liz Brown on number one and Councillor Ian McLean on number two, abstentions on number three. Thank you. And the vote's open. We'll close the vote.
Thank you. Nominations for General Licensing Chair, Liz Brown, 62, Councillor McLean, 60. Thank you. So Liz Brown is nominated. Can we have nominations for General Licensing and Registration Committee Vice Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates Councillor Hunt.
Second that nomination.
We nominate Councillor Peter Atkinson.
Second Councillor Atkinson.
Chair, it's Councillor Hunt on number one and Councillor Peter Atkinson on number two and to abstain is number three. And the vote's open. We'll close the vote.
The nomination, Councillor Hunt, 65, Councillor Atkinson, 57. Councillor Hunt has the nomination. As Vice Chair. We move on to number 11. Statutory Licensing Committee, can I have a nomination for the appointment of Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates Councillor David Brown.
Second that nomination, Chair.
We nominate Councillor Marion Wilson.
Second Councillor Marion Wilson.
Chair, it's Councillor David Brown on one and Councillor Marion Wilson on number two, to abstain is number three. And the vote's open. Chair, we will close the vote.
Thank you. Nominations for Statutory Licensing Chair, David Brown, 62, Martin Wilson, 60. Marion, sorry. I need different glasses, sorry, I do apologise. So David Brown is elected. We move on to number 12. Statutory Licensing Committee, can I have a nomination for the appointment of Vice Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates Councillor Blakey.
Second that nomination.
We nominate Councillor Julie Griffiths.
Second Councillor Griffiths.
Chair, it's Councillor Jan Blakey on number one and Councillor Julie Griffiths on number two and to abstain is number three. The vote is now open. Chair, we'll close the vote now.
Thank you. The Statutory License Vice Chair, Jan Blakey, 60, Julie Griffiths, 61. Julie is... Julie is elected. We move on to number 13. Statutory Licensing Committee, can I have a nomination for the appointment of the second Vice Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates Lesley, Councillor Lesley Mavon.
Can I have a second there?
Second the nomination, Chair.
We nominate Councillor Carol Hampson.
Chair, I second Councillor Hampson.
Chair, it's Councillor Lesley Mavon on button number one and Councillor Hampson on number two, to abstain is number three. And if members need to correct the vote, pressing the right button will correct the vote. And the vote is open. Chair, we'll close the vote.
Thank you. The nominations for statutory second Vice Chair, Lesley Mavon, 62, Carol Hampson, 60. Lesley Mavon is elected. Thank you. So we move on to number 14. General Licensing and Registration Subcommittee, can I have a nomination for the appointment of the first Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates Councillor David Brown.
Second that nomination, Chair.
Thank you. Any other nominations?
We nominate Councillor Peter Atkinson.
Second Councillor, Councillor Atkinson.
There are... Are there any other nominations? Thank you.
So Chair, it's Councillor David Brown on number one, Councillor Peter Atkinson on number two and three to abstain. And the vote's open. We'll close the vote.
Thank you. The General Licensing First Chair, David Brown, 62, Peter Atkinson, 60. David Brown is elected. Thank you. We move on to General Licensing and Registration Subcommittee, can I have nominations for the appointment of the second Chair?
Joint Administration nominates Councillor Lesley Mavon.
Second the nomination, Chair.
Have any other nominations?
We nominate Councillor Emma Waldock.
Chair, I second Councillor Waldock.
Chair, this is a vote for the Subcommittee Second Chair. Number one on the handsets will be for Councillor Lesley Mavon and number two will be for Councillor Emma Waldock and number three will be to abstain. And the vote is open. Chair, we'll close the vote.
Thank you. General Licensing Second Chair, Lesley Mavon, 62, Emma Waldock, 60. Lesley Mavon is elected. Thank you. We move on to General Licensing and Registration Subcommittee, can I have nominations for the appointment of the third Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates Councillor Blakey.
Second that nomination, Chair.
We nominate Councillor Ian McLean.
Second Councillor McLean.
Chair, it'll be Councillor Blakey on number one and Councillor McLean on number two and number three to abstain. And the vote is open. We'll close the vote.
General Licensing Third Chair, Jan Blakey, 60, Ian McLean, 61. Councillor McLean is elected. We move on to General Licensing and Registration Subcommittee... No, sorry, sorry. We move on to Statutory Licensing Subcommittee, can I have a nomination for the appointment of the first Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates Councillor Brown.
Second that nomination, Chair.
We nominate Curtis Bahari.
Second Councillor Bahari.
Chair, it's Councillor David Brown, I think, on number one, Councillor Curtis Bahari on number two and to abstain is number three. The vote's open. We'll close the vote, Chair.
Thank you. Statutory Licensing First Chair, David Brown 62, Curtis Bahari 60. Councillor David Brown is elected. Thank you. We move on to Statutory Licensing Subcommittee. Can I have nominations for the appointment of second chair?
The Joint Administration nominates councillor Lesley Mavon.
Second that nomination, Chair.
We nominate councillor Julie Griffiths.
Second councillor, Griffiths.
Chair, it's councillor Lesley Mavon on number one, and councillor Griffiths on number two, and to abstain is number three. And as ever, if anybody votes the wrong way pressing the button, the intended voter will correct their vote. And the vote is open. Chair, we'll close the vote.
Thank you. Statutory Licensing Second Chair, Lesley Mavon 62, Julie Griffiths 60. Lesley Mavon is elected. Thank you. We move on to number 19. Nominations for Statutory Licensing Subcommittee, the third chair. Thank you.
The Joint Administration nominates councillor Blakey.
Second that nomination, Chair.
We nominate councillor Hampson.
Chair, our second councillor, Hampson.
Chair, on number one, it'll be councillor Blakey. On number two, it'll be councillor Hampson. To abstain is number three. And the vote is open. Chair will close the vote.
Statutory License... Statutory Licensing Subcommittee Chair, Jan Blakey 60, Carol Hampson 61. Carol Hampson is elected. We move on to item 20, Standards Committee. Can I have nominations for the appointment of chair?
The Joint Administration nominates councillor Nicholson.
Second that nomination, Chair.
We nominate councillor Isabella Roberts.
Our second councillor, Isabella Roberts.
Members, it'll be councillor Nicholson on number one, and councillor Roberts on number two, and number three is to abstain. And the vote is open. Chair will close the vote.
Thank you. Standards Chair, councillor Nicholson 62, councillor Roberts 59. Councillor Nicholson is elected. Thank you. Can we move on to Standards Committee nominations for the appointment of vice-chair?
The Joint Administration nominates councillor Rooney.
Second that nomination, Chair.
Nominate councillor Lucy Hovells.
Chair, our second councillor, Hovells.
Chair, it'll be councillor Rooney on number one on the voting handsets, and councillor Hovells on number two on the voting handsets. And number three is to abstain. The vote is open. We'll close the vote.
Thank you. Nominations for the Standards Vice-Chair, councillor Rooney 62, councillor Hovell 60. Councillor Rooney is elected. Thank you. We move on to number 22. Council... County Planning Committee. Can I have a nomination for the appointment of chair?
The Joint Administration nominates councillor Richardson.
Second that nomination, Chair.
We nominate councillor Simon Wilson.
Second councillor, Wilson, please.
Chair, it'll be councillor George Richardson on number one, and councillor Simon Wilson on number two. Number three will be to abstain. And the vote is open. We'll close the vote.
Thank you. County Planning Chair, George Richardson 62, Simon Wilson 60. Councillor Richardson is elected. Thank you. We move on to 23. County Planning Committee. Can I have a nomination for the appointment of vice-chair?
The Joint Administration nominates councillor Alan Bell.
Second that nomination, Chair.
Chair nominates councillor Maura McKeon.
Chair, our second, Maura McKeon, please.
Chair, it's councillor Alan Bell on number one, councillor McKeon on number two, and to abstain is number three. And the vote is open. Chair will close the vote.
Thank you. County Planning Vice-Chair, Alan Bell 65, councillor McKeon 57. Alan Bell is elected. Thank you. Councillors, with your indulgence, I'm proposing that we have another five-minute comfort break. Councillors, with your indulgence, I'm proposing that we have another five-minute comfort break. She forgot her paper. Thank you. We move on to number 24. Area Planning Committee North, can I have a nomination for the appointment of Chair?
The Joint Administration nominates councillor Elaine Peak.
Second that nomination, Chair.
Nominate councillor Binney.
Chair, I second councillor Gordon Binney.
Nominations?
Chair, councillor Peak will be on number one on the voting handsets and councillor Binney will be on number two. Number three will be to abstain. And the vote is open. Chair will close the vote.
North Planning Chair, councillor Peak 63, councillor Binney 59. Councillor Peak is elected. Area Planning Committee North, can I have nominations for Vice Chair?
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Stelling.
Second that nomination, Chair.
Nominate councillor Early.
Second councillor Kevin Early.
Chair, it will be councillor Watstelling on number one, councillor Early on number two. To abstain is number three. And if anyone ever presses the wrong button, pressing the right button will correct their vote. And the vote is open. Chair will close the vote.
Thank you. North Planning Vice Chair, councillor Stelling 61, councillor Early 61.
Chair, in the event of a tie, the Chair has a second casting vote.
My second casting vote goes to councillor Stelling. Councillor Stelling is appointed as Vice Chair. Area Planning Committee Central and East, can I have a nomination for the appointment of Chair?
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Freeman.
Second that nomination, Chair.
Nominate councillor Shaw.
Second councillor Kevin Shaw.
Chair, it's councillor Davis Freeman on number one and councillor Kevin Shaw on number two. To abstain is number three. And the vote is open. Chair will close the vote.
Central and East Planning Chair, councillor Freeman 62, councillor Shaw 60. Councillor Freeman is elected. Thank you. Area Planning Committee Central and East, can I have nominations for the appointment of Vice Chair?
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Oliver.
Second that nomination, Chair.
Nominate councillor Manchester.
Chair, I second councillor Richard Manchester.
Chair, it will be councillor Oliver on number one and councillor Manchester on number two. To abstain will be number three. And the vote is open. Chair will close the vote.
Thank you. Central and East Planning Vice Chair, councillor Oliver 62, councillor Manchester 60. Councillor Oliver is elected. Thank you. We move on to Area Planning Committee South and West, can I have nominations for the appointment of Chair?
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Joel Quinn.
I'll second that nomination, Chair.
Nominate councillor Shirley Quinn.
Chair, I second councillor Quinn.
Chair, it will be councillor Joel Quinn on number one and councillor Shirley Quinn on number two. To abstain will be number three. And the vote is open. Chair will close the vote.
South and West Planning Chair, councillor Joel Quinn 62, councillor Shirley Quinn 60. Councillor Joel Quinn is elected. Thank you. Area Planning Committee South and West, can I have the nomination for the appointment of Vice Chair? Thank you.
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Savery.
Thank you.
I'll second the nomination, Chair.
Thank you.
Nominate councillor Chaplow.
Chair, I second councillor Chaplow.
Chair, it will be councillor Savery on number one and councillor Chaplow on number two and number three to abstain. The vote is open.
Area Planning South and West, Vice Chair, councillor Savery 62, councillor Chaplow 60. Councillor Savery is elected. Thank you. We move on to number 30. Pension Fund Committee, can I have a nomination for the appointment of Chair?
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Sutton Lloyd.
I'll second the nomination, Chair. Thank you.
Nominate councillor Jim Atkinson.
Chair, I second councillor Jim Atkinson.
Chair, for the position of Pension Fund Committee Chair, it will be councillor Sutton Lloyd on number one, councillor Jim Atkinson on number two, and number three to abstain. And the vote is open.
Chair will close the vote.
Pension Committee Chair, councillor Sutton Lloyd, 62; councillor Jim Atkinson, 60. Councillor Sutton Lloyd is elected. Thank you. Pension Fund Committee, can I have a nomination for the appointment of Vice Chair?
Joint Administration nominate councillor Stead.
Second that nomination, Chair. Thank you.
Nominate councillor Christine Fletcher.
Chair, I second councillor Fletcher.
Chair, number one will be councillor Stead, number two will be councillor Fletcher, number three will be to abstain. And the vote is open.
Chair will close the vote.
Pension Committee Vice Chair, councillor Stead, 62; councillor Fletcher, 60. Councillor Stead is elected. Corporate Parenting Panel, can I have nominations for the appointment of Chair?
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Simmons.
Second that nomination, Chair. Thank you.
Nominate councillor Chris Vardy.
Chair, I second councillor Chris Vardy.
Chair, this is the Corporate Parenting Panel Chair, number one is for councillor Simmons, number two for councillor Vardy, number three to abstain. And the vote is open.
We'll close the vote.
Corporate Parenting Panel Chair, councillor Simmons, 62; councillor Vardy, 60. Councillor Simmons is elected. Corporate Parenting Panel Vice Chair, can I have nominations?
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Walton.
Second that nomination, Chair. Thank you.
Nominate councillor Robert Agcock Foster.
Second councillor Robert Agcock Foster, please.
Chair, it will be councillor Walton on number one, councillor Agcock Foster on number two, to abstain will be number three. If anyone voted the wrong way, as a reminder, if you press the right button, that will correct your vote. The vote is open.
We'll close the vote.
Corporate Parenting Panel Vice Chair, councillor Walton, 61; councillor Agcock Foster, 61. Again, I will use the casting vote and I will vote for councillor Walton. Thank you. Sorry, we move on to Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, can I have nominations for the appointment of Chair?
Joint Administration nominate councillor Martin.
Second that nomination, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nominate councillor Rob Crute.
Chair, I second councillor Rob Crute.
Point of order, I'd like a call for a named vote.
Councillor Hedy, you'll need 10 people to support you. Yeah, you've got 10. So Chair, on the vote for the Chair of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, it will be councillor Martin on number one, councillor Crute on number two, to abstain will be number three. It will be a named vote, therefore the names and how people vote, it will appear in the minutes and we'll flick through them on the screen as well. And the vote is open.
We'll close the vote.
Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board Chair, councillor Martin, 59; councillor Crute, 60. Councillor Crute is elected. Moving on, Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, can I have nominations for the appointment of Vice Chair?
Joint Administration nominate councillor Lyons.
Second that nomination, Chair. Thank you.
Nominate councillor Alison Beatty.
Chair, I second councillor Alison Beatty.
Chair, it will be councillor Lyons on number one, councillor Beatty on number two and to abstain will be number three. And the vote is open.
Chair will close the vote.
Scrutiny Management Board Vice Chair, councillor Lyons, 62; councillor Beatty, 60. Councillor Lyons is elected. Vice Chair, thank you. Moving on to Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee, can I have nominations for the appointment of Chair?
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Reed.
Second that nomination, Chair. Thank you.
Nominate councillor Deenaly.
Chair, I second councillor Stacey Deenaly.
Chair, it will be councillor Reed on number one and councillor Deenaly on number two, to abstain will be on number three. And the vote is open.
Chair will close the vote.
Children and Young People's Scrutiny Chair, councillor Reed, 60; councillor Deenaly, 60. So again, I have to use my casting vote and I vote for councillor Reed. Can we move on to Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee Vice Chair nominations, please?
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Coslett.
Second that nomination, Chair. Thank you.
Nominate councillor Julie Skirfield.
Chair, I second councillor Julie Skirfield.
Chair, it will be councillor Coslett on number one and councillor Skirfield on number two, to abstain will be number three. The vote is open.
Chair will close the vote.
Children and Young People's Scrutiny Vice Chair, councillor Coslett, 61; councillor Skirfield, 60. Councillor Coslett is elected. Thank you. We move on to number 38. Safe and Stronger Community Scrutiny Committee, can I have a nomination for the appointment of Chair?
Joint Administration nominate councillor Heatherside.
Second that nomination, Chair. Thank you.
Nominate councillor David Boyce.
Chair, I second councillor David Boyce.
Chair, it will be councillor Heatherside on number one, councillor Boyce on number two and to abstain will be number three. And the vote is open.
Chair, we'll close the vote.
Safer and Stronger Communities Chair, councillor Heviside, 65, councillor Boyce, 57, councillor Heviside is elected. We move on to Safer and Stronger Communities Scrutiny Vice Chair, can I have nominations for the appointment?
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Charlton.
Second nomination, Chair, thank you.
Nominate councillor Jake Miller.
Chair, I second councillor Jake Miller.
Chair, it's councillor Charlton on number one, and councillor Miller on number two, to abstain is number three. And the vote is open.
Chair, we'll close the vote.
Safer and Stronger Communities Vice Chair, councillor Charlton, 63, councillor Miller, 58, councillor Charlton is elected. Thank you. We move on, Environmental and Sustainable Communities Scrutiny Committee, can I have nominations for Chair?
Joint Administration nominate councillor Colt.
Second nomination, Chair, thank you.
Nominate councillor Eddie Adam.
Chair, I second councillor Adam.
Chair, it will be councillor Colt on number one, and councillor Adam on number two, number three to abstain, and just as a reminder, if anyone votes incorrectly, pressing the correct button will correct their vote. And the vote is open.
Chair, we'll close the vote.
Environmental and Sustainable Communities Chair, councillor Colt, 62, councillor Adams, 60, councillor Colt is elected. Can we move on to Environmental and Sustainable Communities Vice Chair, can I have nominations, please?
Joint Administration nominate councillor Elmer.
Second nomination, Chair, thank you.
Nominate councillor Purvis.
Second councillor John Purvis.
Chair, councillor Elmer will be on button number one, and councillor Purvis will be on button number two, and it will be number three to abstain. The vote is open.
Chair, we'll close the vote.
Thank you. Nominations for Environmental and Sustainable Communities Vice Chair, councillor Elmer, 64, councillor Purvis, 58, councillor Elmer is elected. We move on, Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee, can I have nominations for the appointment of Chair?
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Robson.
Second nomination, Chair, thank you.
Chair, could I nominate councillor Bill Moist, please?
And I would like to second that, Chair.
Nobody can be nominated to a committee if they're not a member of it. That's an invalid nomination.
Chair, there are a number of groups in the political balance who are nominated, who are entitled to half a seat because of the way the political balance works out. Councillor Bill Moist's group is one of those groups which is entitled to half a seat. It's not an invalid nomination at this stage. Clearly, there'll have to be a discussion amongst the groups after this meeting as to which of the four groups actually take those two seats. If councillor Moist isn't one of them, then this appointment will come back to the next meeting of full council.
Just asking. That person isn't a member of any committee at this point in time as we vote in here. No one is.
Chair, the position is, as I've explained, the committee make-up is set by the political balance, councillor Moist is potentially entitled to a seat.
Are there any... councillor Marshall?
Chair, obviously, I just wanted to try and help everybody out here, you know, there clearly isn't anybody who's got a political mandate from the council this morning, the voting's been all over, and in the interest of bringing the council together, if it wasn't able for that seat to be negotiated across the other political groupings, we would work with the leader of the new independent group on the county council to help facilitate the position on there.
Can we all come to order and listen? Are there any of the nominations? We'll move to the vote.
So, Chair, this is for the Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee Chair, councillor Robson will be on number one, councillor Moist on number two, to abstain is number three, and again, a reminder, if anybody votes incorrectly, pressing the right button will correct their vote. The vote is open.
Chair, we'll close the vote.
Economy and Enterprise Chair, councillor Robson, 57, councillor Moist, 62, councillor Moist is elected. We move on to Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee nominations for Vice Chair.
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Sterling.
Second nomination, Chair, thank you.
Nominate councillor Angela Sirtes.
Chair, I second councillor Sirtes.
Chair, it will be councillor Sterling on number one, and councillor Sirtes on number two, and number three to abstain. The vote is open.
Chair, we'll close the vote.
Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Vice Chair, councillor Sterling, 59, councillor Sirtes, 61, councillor Sirtes is elected. We move on to Adults Wellbeing and Health Scrutiny Committee, can I have nominations for the Chair?
Joint Administration nominate councillor Jopling.
Second nomination, Chair, thank you.
Nominate councillor Veronica Andrews.
Chair, I second councillor Andrews.
Chair, it will be councillor Jopling on number one, councillor Andrews on number two, to abstain will be number three. And the vote is open.
Chair, we'll close the vote.
Thank you. Adults Wellbeing and Health Chair, councillor Jopling, 58, councillor Andrews, 60, councillor Andrews is elected. We move on to Adults Wellbeing and Health Scrutiny Vice Chair, can I have nominations?
Joint Administration nominate councillor Howie.
Second nomination, Chair, thank you.
Nominate councillor Matt Johnson.
Chair, I second councillor Johnson.
Chair, it will be councillor Howie on number one, and councillor Johnson on number two, to abstain will be number three. The vote is open. The vote is open. Chair, we'll close the vote.
Adults Wellbeing and Health Vice Chair, councillor Howie, 57, councillor Johnson, 61. Councillor Johnson is elected. Thank you. That brings us to the end of that item. We move on to item number 10, Appointment to Joint Bodies and Other Bodies, 2023/24. Can I ask James from Legal Department and Democratic Services to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for council to agree appointments to joint and other bodies to which the council are entitled to nominate representatives. Details and criteria for nominating to the bodies are set out in paragraph four to the report. In summary, in relation to the Fire Authority and to the Police and Crime Panel, council is asked to agree the allocation of seats which have been calculated in accordance with the political balance. Appendix two and appendix four of the report contain those calculations. In relation to the Charter Trust for the City of Durham, details are set out at appendix three to the report. Appointees are drawn from members representing electoral areas wholly or partially within the former Durham city area. In addition, the county council, as principal authority, may appoint three additional trustees from the county area. Since May 2021, however, the council has chosen not to appoint to these positions. In relation to the Joint Audit Committee, since 2013, the council has nominated a rep to serve on the Joint Audit Committee to assist the Police and Crime Commissioner and the Chief Constable. The chair of the council's audit committee has always been nominated to this position. In relation to the North East Comptite Authority, it's usual practice for the council to agree the meeting to the appointments to NECA and North of Tyne Joint Transport Committees. However, we've not yet received specific requirements from the NECA Secretariat, so the report seeks delegated authority to the head of Legal and Democratic Services to make those appointments in consultation with the appropriate group leaders at a later date. In relation to the Business Durham Advisory Board, council agreed the membership for this in July 2021, and membership has remained as set out in paragraph 4b since then. And it's proposed that that membership continues unchanged for this municipal year. The report also seeks delegated authority to agree nominations to other bodies as referenced in paragraph 4g to the report, and also make any in-year changes. So the recommendations are set out, Chair, at paragraphs 3a to 3h in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask the leader of the council to move paragraphs 3a to h detailed in the report?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I move the recommendations as set out in paragraphs 3a to h of the report. In respect of recommendation 3c, the head of Legal and Democratic Services, or deputy, sorry, has outlined that the council may appoint three additional trustees to the Charter Trust as set out in paragraph four to appendix six. The report notes that we do not want to appoint to these additional positions this year, as we haven't in the last two years with moving that recommendation. I do not propose that the council appoints again this year. So thank you, and I've moved the report, sorry.
Thank you. Can I have a second of the recommendations?
Second of the report and recommendations, Chair.
Thank you. Can I ask the council if there are any questions? Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations? So we move on to item 11, Statement from Returning Officer. This report is for information only. We move on to item 12, The Date of the Council Meetings. Can I ask the council to agree the suggested dates of the council meetings for 2023/24 as printed on the agenda? Thank you. That concludes today's business. Thank you all for your attendance. And can I just say thank you for your patience. Once ICT have indicated that the broadcast has ended, members, can we please stay behind for the group photograph? Once again, thank you for your patience.